Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I open and call the city council meeting for Wednesday, July 22 to order. We have a lot of things going on in community. We're praying for Briaia, so let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Gripp, if you will lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brian, will you please call the roll?
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jopkin.
Here.
Anne Ambrose.
Here.
Ten. President, your honor.
Thank you, Brian. Welcome, everyone. Please remember you're communicating with all of your Davenport friends and people in the area. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or turn it off because it could just mess with what we're doing here. So, everybody, we welcome your thoughts and comments. Remind you to please talk to us as a body or talk to me, not any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. And when it's public with comment, you'll have five minutes. Thank you. Will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting for July 8?
So move.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Okay. Just wait for both eyes up top. Ms. Spiegel, city administrator, is there any update?
Just one thing. I know the chief and the special agent in charge gave a press briefing earlier today, but I wanted to extend my appreciation both to our police department and all the officers who have been working tirelessly, as well as our federal agents who've been here for about a week now, a little over a week. And also, there have been a number of other city departments, Public Works, IT, who have been working behind the scenes to help with our search for Briaia. And I just wanted to say I'm really proud of staff and how the community has all come together on this topic.
Good point. Thank you. Will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the committee to hold for July 15?
So move.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Any opposed? Good. Okay. One presentation this evening, so I'll ask Chad Dyson, our public park, or public, our parks director, to come and introduce a wonderful gentleman, Steve Georgensen, from Ames to do a nice presentation for us. So, Chad, thank you.
Thank you, Chad Dyson, Parks and Rec Director, Mayor and Council. It's my privilege and honor to have Steve Georgensen, who is the CEO of the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association here tonight. He will be presenting the annual Iowa Parks and Recreation Association Service Club Award to our Quad City Rotary Clubs for their efforts in fundraising and advocacy for the Miracle Field. Mr. Georgensen.
Mayor Mattson, council, city minister Spiegel, and Director Dyson, it's a privilege and honor to be with you today to make a presentation on behalf of the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association. The association is comprised of 107 municipal Parks and Recreation Departments throughout the state of Iowa. These departments represent over 2 million citizens that they serve, and it's my opportunity to be with you today. Unfortunately, we were not able to gather at our spring conference, obviously, because of COVID-19. That event had to be canceled back in March. Subsequently, it's my privilege to be with you today to present one of our prestigious awards to this body that has been so supportive of not only your city, but also the Parks and Recreation Department and the individuals they serve. So, I had an opportunity to visit with Mayor Mattson, Director Dyson, and then the two gentlemen that will be receiving the award on behalf of the Quad Cities Rotary Club. So, that being said, I'd like to be able to share what would have been the script that would have been read that evening and then present the two gentlemen with their award, if you please. Thank you. The Service Club Award, given by the Iowa Parks and Recreation Association, recognizes a service group as defined as an organization with membership and bylaws outside of a profession which has supported and contributed to the strengthening of programs and resources of leisure services. This has been achieved through outstanding contributions to the parks, recreation, and conservation movement within the community, area, county, or state. This year's recipient of the Service Club Award has been an integral part of a program called the Challenge League. How many of you know of that? Everybody should be nodding yes, correct? Fantastic. In 1989, this league was established as a separate division of Little League Baseball. It provided opportunities for boys and girls with physical and mental disabilities to compete in baseball in the same way millions of other children participate in our city, state, nation, and the world. Since its inception, Rotary has played a very important role in the Challenger League, some members being buddies, some as coaches, while others help with snacks and general league responsibilities. In 2014, a committee was formed to examine the viability of an inclusive field for the Quad Cities. In 2017, their area Rotary Club made a commitment to raise $100,000 to help build a field that would meet the needs of the Challenger League. Rotary held many community events such as golf outings, Family Fest, Wing Fest, Rotary Club Night at the Ballpark, along with private collection donations. Through the success of these events, Rotary not only made their commitment of $100,000, but exceeded it. September 2019, the Miracle Field held its first game. As they had been all along, Rotary Club members were on hand helping athletes play the game they love. Without these Rotary Club members, Challenger League athletes would not have had the opportunity to play and grow through their baseball and their community. There's some photographs, I believe, too, isn't there? Okay, cool. There's some photographs of what you've probably witnessed as you go out into your different wards or your community. You can see those. Those are fantastic, especially that iron works, as you can see with that center pitcher, that shows the Miracle League Field and so the name of it. So, we're very excited. It's the Prairie Ridge Heights Park. And I'm looking forward to, Chad, sometime either this summer or next summer, getting a tour of that facility. So, it's gonna be really neat to be able to see. With their supportive fundraising, the Miracle Field is now a place where everyone can play inclusively. Now, the gentleman mentioned before that this field is located with other Little League fields, and so the great opportunity is that children that are able-bodied can go and see this type of facility and learn about inclusivity and diversity. What a wonderful opportunity because I live in Ames, and our Miracle League Field includes a playground, but it is separate from our other baseball fields. So, then those children would have to make the effort, as well as the parents in the community, to get to that specific field as opposed to being inclusive. So, kudos to this particular community that stepped up to the plate with Rotary and the support of council and the community to be able to offer that. Please join me in honoring this year's recipients of the IPRA Service Club Award. The Quad Cities Rotary Clubs and representing that group this evening is Mr. Nick Wagner, who is the president, and Mr. JD Walls, who is the fundraising chair. So, I'd like to be able to give you this award on behalf of 107 municipal Parks and Recreation Departments, who submitted the nomination, which was Director Dyson and Park Superintendent Betsy Tubbsel. Congratulations, gentlemen. We're gonna do the elbows. Your floor. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. And on behalf of Rotarians and other civic organizations in the Quad Cities that made this possible, we are in Iowa Quad Cities Rotary, but really representing all the clubs that made this possible. It's a wonderful project that you, in terms of the community, were able to sponsor and really make happen, not only for Davenport, which is wonderful, but really the Quad Cities areas being a place to really come. So, thank you for allowing us to support and help you make this thing happen.
Okay, how do we want to do? Is there a big space for social distance? You won't black out in the cycle.
I can walk.
We're unwelcoming here. Just today.
We're gonna do two. There'll be a flasher, then no flash. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone. And for people who know, last year, myself and many folks up here and many people in the community were happy to kind of cut the ribbon on this and watch the kids. And it was just so wonderful to have this in our community for the kids to play, and they were so excited and just proud to be part of some city like Davenport that commits to things like that. And we'll have another one coming up in Vandevere here shortly. So, just happy to be part. Okay, let's see here. All right. Now, we'll move to petitions and communications. So, I'll start off. I just want to echo what Ms. Spiegel said. I've had the privilege, as I always do, to witness our staff, usually Ms. Spiegel and all the departments on how they've been dealing with COVID, how they've been adjusting to the rules and maneuvering whatever comes up. Public Works dealing with stuff. And it's just been an honor to watch and witness the efforts that have been going on. Whatever, you've heard me talk, but it's still appropriate. Whatever goes on, they just accept, take on, whatever the word you want to use, and problem solve and deal with the situation and go. So, now lately, because of the terrible missing little girl, Briaia, I've witnessed our police department in collaboration with so many federal partners, as Ms. Spiegel said, and I've talked about it a little bit already, the FBI and the DCI. And we have numerous members of those organizations here and have been here, stationed here, working in other parts of the Quad Cities and north of here in Clinton. I've been up there and I've talked with the mayor and the county attorney and went out to where all the sheriff's folks are and all the people. And just the outpouring of both volunteers and law enforcement to put a full effort into finding this young little girl. So, I just can't say enough about the effort and the time and dedication to duty that all these folks, I mean, I did a little thing a couple of days ago, but the list of folks from county sheriffs to emergency management folks, to different police, both here, all in the Quad Cities and Clinton and Comanche. I talked to the mayor there and his efforts for his folks, helping us out. And Department of Public Safety, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, the Clinton County, the Army Reserve, and all the assets they have, natural resources, Iowa State Patrol. And I apologize, I'm missing so many. But so many folks, both here and everywhere else, in law enforcement, in community, in federal agencies, and volunteers that have stepped up and put their efforts. So, I just again want to say thank you. Sometimes people behind the scenes don't get recognized, as Ms. Spiegel said, but they are working their tails off, quite frankly, to try and help in their lane, whatever their lane is, to try and help with this situation and pray for the safe return of our young lady, Ms. Briaia. So, again, thank you, chief, and everyone that's helping and community members that are helping also. So, I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. I have some great news to report tonight. We had what I would call, since it's a big week of wins, just keep in mind that the growth is generally point one, is less than point one is what it's showing nationally, and that's a typical weekly growth. So, we had a huge week, and I want to give, the great census tract, 106, finally went from gold to yellow. That doesn't sound like much, but it was, it was, it had a 0.3% increase from last week. This census tract represents the people who probably have the least in our cities. They have the highest rates of poverty. They have the lowest rates of homeownership. This is a high rental area. And so, to see this start to move is great. And that moves it into a new category. 107, which is also a highly challenged census tract, had a 0.5 percentage, a 0.5 increase. That's huge. 114 was 0.2. That's up above around, that's in just north of Locust. And then our census tract 109, which is downtown, had a 0.4 increase. That's just, that's a huge increase. We are, Iowa still is, it's number four, tied for number four in the country. So, it's one of the leading states. It had a 0.2 increase, and Scott County had a 0.3 increase. Davenport had a 0.3 increase. So, a lot of that increase across Scott County came from Davenport. So, this is really exciting. I know that it's probably pretty dull for people who don't care much about numbers, but we've been working hard. You know, responding to the census is extremely important, and it's something that we all need to do. It's something that's required by law. There will be postcards going out, starting this week, across the country to people who haven't responded. And then the census takers will begin the first week, the second week in August, to knock on people's doors. So, if you know anybody who needs help, I got a call last, this week, and I called a gentleman back and helped him with his census online. I'll be happy to help. 563-594-0628. Give me a call. And it takes just a few minutes. He had no access to the internet and was happy to get it done. And so, I was happy to help him. So, let's just keep going on this. I believe also, your honor, we are not, council is not meeting next week. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, you won't get a report next week, but I'll be back in the first week in August with an update. And I hope to see these numbers keep increasing. So, thank you, your honor.
Thank you for your leadership, Alderwoman McGinnis. And just so everybody heard that, we are not meeting. It's a free fifth Wednesday. We don't meet on the fifth Wednesday, so it's a free week for all you wonderful folks. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have two, is this an appropriate place to have two questions for Mr. Merritt?
Sure.
If he could come up?
He's on his way.
Thank you.
Clay Merritt, Public Works. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Clay. Could you give, I have two questions. One is, could you just give a quick status of the 53rd Street construction? And the second one is the follow-up on the cost of the N5 lot at Bain Street Landing.
So, the answer to the second question is there was five contracts approved by the city council for approximately 2.4 million. I believe also, one of your questions from your email correspondence was, when is it look like that last stage is going to be done? That's the lighting. I believe it was approved probably eight, no, probably eight to 10 months ago, but the lead time on ordering, on getting those fixtures has been pretty substantial, with everything going on in our country. So, we're looking to have that stuff in by October. And at that which point is done, which should kind of play nicely, hopefully, knocking on wood, with what Canadian Pacific is doing at that rail crossing because they are at that crossing as well. So, that's playing a large part in, into that, what we officially call as N5. In terms of 53rd, so a lot of what's been, or most of what's been happening since the beginning of construction season, so they removed and excavated the two, was normally the two eastbound lanes from Brady to Eastern. And then from that time, they've been doing things that a lot of people probably don't see. It's a lot of underground work. Unfortunately, is the case with this type of, this type of construction service, is we've hit a number of unknown utility things on the way. So, we've been having to challenge and getting through that. But in the end, most of the storm sewer pipe and storm sewer structures have been put in place. We're getting ready to finish those. That's why in the last week or so, if you've been driving through that particular construction site, you've seen a lot more people working on surface-related things. That's the stuff that people, a lot of people see, they react to. When they were doing underground stuff, a lot of people just kind of go around going like, what are they doing? What's going on? And that's kind of been the thing. So, on the west side of the project, from, you know, Exine to Tremont, you're gonna start seeing a lot of pavement-related or surface-related work in preparation for paving. Once they have that done, once they have it all the way paved to Tremont, then you're gonna see the Tremont intersection be the next critical component. We, part of the plan is not to start Tremont until Grand and those other ones are completed. They're getting close to doing that, then we'll do Tremont, and then we'll continue our way east as we go forward. I know it's a, it's a six and a half million dollar construction project. It feels like when you're driving by, you're not seeing much happening, but it is, it's just happening below ground. And we're kind of starting, at least on that west section, to start seeing some movement on the surface-related stuff. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Merritt. Very helpful. And I also, again, want to thank the council and Ms. Gleason for being able to move the light at Eastern and Veterans Memorial Parkway forward, since that's one of the detours, and it's very dangerous. So, I really appreciate that. And then I just have one statement. Tomorrow, the National Wildlife Federation is sponsoring a press, a press conference at 10:30 in the morning on Zoom. It's to speak out against the rollback of the federal clean car standards, which is the mileage standard, dropping them, making them, well, actually making them higher. Representative Monica Kurth will be one of the speakers. Scott County Supervisor Ken Croken, myself, Dr. Maureen McHugh, and of course Tyler Granger from the National Wildlife Federation. And again, that will be at 10:30, and it will be livestreamed, and there will be a press release afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I tell this every time I begin to speak. If Mary is before me, I'm always gonna tell her, thank you for all that you do with the census. I kid you not, that is a heavy lift, and, but it is so critical to the nation and particularly to Davenport as we receive federal funds to the city. So, thank you so very much for all that you do with that. Uh-oh, Public Works. So, the, I always, I would like to thank Clay and everybody in Public Works, with all the guys you do, especially feeding me information to articulate to the people of the seventh ward that we're doing our best far as road work. So, as you know, if, as an Alder person, that's what most people care about, you know, what we doing for the roads. And I sincerely appreciate the emails. I try to, you know, if I get an email with some information, I always send them back a note saying, you know, I greatly appreciate it. But, you know, one of the challenges is the perception that, you know, we see, we see the barriers, we see, you know, some people, but then again, other areas may feel neglected. But I try to do my very best to educate the people as far as, you know, where we are with far as road. But I always gonna tell you guys, thank you so very much for all, all that you're doing. Third, I will be hosting a ward meeting. It has not been set in stone because I'm trying to coordinate certain participants. There are some projects going on on Joe Sings property, and I get 1,000 emails pertaining to, you know, what's going on with the property, what about the water retention and how that's gonna affect the rest of the residents in that particular area. So, I'm aggressively working on a ward meeting to really address that as well as have somebody from the police department to really go over what's going on far as crime. That meeting will be virtually. Last, I will discuss the comments that I've made. And it made the paper, and I received some nasty emails. But I just wish individuals who read the paper, I wish they would have heard my full comment. I made comments in regards to perceptions in the African-American community on how they, how we feel as relation to Briaia, missing Briaia. And what they did not hear is that we need to control the narrative. That's what they did not hear. And I said that before. I'll say it again. We, as a city, should control the narrative. We should not allow people on Facebook, Twitter, wherever the social media platform to control that narrative. I had the opportunity to go out to Clinton with some great people to search for her, and I kid you not, the amount of resources, the volunteers, the work behind the scenes, that's what's not getting out. And that's what I said last week, and I will say it again. We need to control the narrative. We need to tell the people, what are we doing? How are we getting after it? But I will also caution you, you know, we need to be as forthcoming as possible because everybody will still say, well, you know, I think they're just BSing us. I'm just be flat out and just say that. But, you know, I was, as somebody who navigates in two different worlds, I'm gonna say that again, as someone who navigates in two different worlds, is very difficult. Very difficult. Because when you try to, to express or tell individuals on what the resource we put into, and they say, well, I don't think so. Well, I'm telling you, I witnessed it. I was there. The FBI is here. There's many people, I call them the alphabet people. They all here. But we, as city council, we as leaders, we as community should be looking, volunteering, doing all we can to find this beautiful young lady. And I will tell, I will tell the mayor and my friends on the city council that, you know, we are doing our best. I'll tell people that's in my ward, you know, individuals sending those emails. I wish, instead of sending emails, where were you when you tried to go find Briaia? And still telling me about the ills of the black community. Have you ever seen, do you even know this young lady? So, to those Twitter fingers and social, Facebook activists, attend a city council meeting. I'm willing to discuss with you the missing, the missing child. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Peacock. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, your honor. So, this, this year has been a really difficult year to be an elected official. It's been a difficult year to live in the United States. Not many people are having an enjoyable time. It's difficult to show up on a night like tonight and talk about alley resurfacing and no parking signs and issues that seem very inconsequential at a time where we have a 10-year-old girl who's missing in our community. But that's what we're tasked to do as elected officials. We show up and conduct the people's business through a pandemic, through civil unrest, through community tragedy. That's what we're elected to do. That's what we show up and do. But it's been very difficult. And, but I have seen some really good things, like Alderman Peacock said, literally thousands of people showing up to walk through fields and look for a missing girl, Briaia. Businesses donating water, nonprofits organizing searches, the community showing up. City council people who have been out searching. I know multiple on the council have, but especially Alderman Peacock, who is leading by example. Thank you, guys, for your efforts. To our police officers and detectives who have been working 14 to 16-hour days now for 10 days. And they will continue to do that until we find her. But I've also heard the voices of criticism that, you know, action didn't take place fast enough or not enough is being done. And while I disagree with those statements because I get to see a little bit closer look firsthand of what is actually being done by the city, I understand it. I empathize with those people. If my daughter were missing, there would be nothing that would be sufficient until she were found. So, my heart breaks for her family, the people who know her, the community that is missing her. And after talking with the chief today, the community needs to continue to send in your tips. If you saw the vehicles, if you saw the person of interest, if you have anything that can help, you need to continue to send in your tips. that can help, you need to continue to send those in, because it is, it is working, right? They're getting closer, they're going to find, find her, it's going to happen. And then also, if, if you have the time and resources, continue to search. And I, again, thank you, Alderman Peacock, for leading the effort on this, and for the other council members, and for the community, and our police officers, and all the folks who are in on this, it's a community effort, and, and I know we will keep at it until we find her. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to items on discussion. So first item is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 11 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Resident Parking Only, bidding Washington Lane along the east side in front of 1729, 1731 Washington Lane. Staff recommends denial. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none, okay. Alderman, move the ordinance. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I want to thank the council for keeping an open mind and keeping this on the agenda on a request of Mr. Johnson.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, all right, Brian, please call the roll for third consideration.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
No.
Dickman.
No.
Jobjen.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Doorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
No.
And Gripp.
Yes.
Seven yeses and three nos, Your Honor.
Okay, the ordinance is adopted. Number two, resolution approving updates to the transit system, including the following: reducing Saturday bus fees to 50 cents, approving Saturday service connections, offering on-demand Sunday service from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to those with a 30-day pass, traveling to employment, and eliminating regular route Sunday service. Is there any public with comment? Okay, there's motion and a second, any other discussion from Alderman or Alderwoman? Alderwoman Lee.
I'd like to request Ms. Gleason to come up and give a summary of the background work that was done for this and her findings.
Nicole Gleason, Public Works. So per the white paper we presented to council in regards to Sunday service, when we did the route changes around four years ago, this addition of the service was in response to the customer feedback at that time. Since then, the traction for this service really hasn't picked up. Sunday ridership is about half of Saturday, and Saturday is about half of weekday service. So you'll oftentimes find buses riding around empty. We did do an informal survey over the winter, kind of seeing who was using the Sunday service, recognizing that about a quarter of the users were using it for employment, and knowing that that was a critical piece that we maintain, people able to get to employment. So we did reach out to Riverbend Transit, and they were willing to do the on-demand Sunday service for those traveling to employment. And then we thought this would be a good, a kind of compromise with the reduction of Saturday service to encourage those not traveling to employment on Sunday to use the Saturday service for shopping and things of that nature. So hopefully that was adequate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Seeing no one, Brian, please call the roll.
Peacock.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Jobjen.
Yes.
Ambrose. Dunn.
Yes.
Doorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
And Condon.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
The resolution is adopted. Number three, resolution ordering preparation of detailed plans, specifications, notice of hearing, notice to bidders, form of contract, and publication of the notice to bidders and notice of hearing covering the 2020 alley resurfacing program for the east-west alley between East River Drive and Wood Lane from Forest Road to the Alley End. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none, there's a motion and a second. Any Alderman with discussion? Alderman Jobjen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Brian, I was wondering if you could please pull up that picture, be brief. Again, as I mentioned last week, I asked my fellow council members to vote no on this project. This is a small alley that does not use city services. There's only two garages that even use this alley. There are ways in which this project can be done much cheaper to save the city and residents money, not only through the residents being able to do themselves, but just learned that city staff will be able to make a proposal to the residents to save everybody money, cut this project way down. And then lastly, my other reason, as I mentioned last week, I was not pleased with the way in which the, the votes kind of came out and came to be. I know that there are ways to collaborate with residents to get things done when there might be opposition, but in this manner, I felt that there was not clear transparency to have an adequate vote that actually ended up swinging this to a, to a four yes, three no, when really it was a four no, three yes. And so therefore, I again ask everybody to vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjen. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So last week, I just brought up concern with our, that our process to resurface alleys is cumbersome, it's hard to navigate for our citizens. We do not replace many alleys in our city on an annual basis, even though we need to. I, I consider them infrastructure that goes along with our roads, and I, I express concern that we'd be setting a precedent that someone takes the time to go through the process to get a new alley, and then they get to the final step, which could take almost a year to get to, and then we, we tell them no. So I just wanted to make sure that that concern is out there. Listening to Alderman Jobjen, who's been working this, and I appreciate your effort on this, I am going to defer to the ward Alderman. I just wanted to make sure that we are aware that when we go through this process, and typically, we should be supporting the alley resurfacing, but I realize this is atypical because it, it serves so few houses, and it does not serve any of the, the public utilities. So I can appreciate that, and Alderwoman McGinnis helped me to understand that well, too. So thank you for your time, I support the, the ward Alderman on this, I just wanted to again express my concern with that.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Alderman Gripp has said it very well. I want to thank you, Alderman Jobjen, for your diligence in this, and I too, serving a ward that is very much our core area, which has, you know, a fairly high amount of rental, and sometimes our landlords are not as anxious to spend the money on improving alleys. So I was also concerned about precedent-setting, and there are times when it is, you know, three, four, and I, I want to always protect people's investment in our, in our core area, where sometimes our alleys really need work. But in this case, it is, I don't feel like it sets a precedent either. It is an alley that does not use city services, so we don't have trucks on it. I don't mind the three, the three-two, because that happens sometimes, but I, I do understand in this case, it is a unique situation, and so I, you know, I do, I am supporting your requests as well, so. But thank you for the time you took to also explain it, to explore it, and that city tried, and city tried to work for, with a compromise on this, and the original petitioner, I think, wasn't willing to do that. So I think this is a process that's worked this time, and I'm glad we took the time to do it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I also support the work that Alderman Jobjen did, working with the residents. I've looked at the area. I support the alley program, I think it's really important, but in this case, I agree that it doesn't serve enough people. It was going to be very costly for the city and for the folks along the area, and so I will also support Alderman Jobjen.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Seeing no one else, Brian, please call the roll.
Dickman.
No.
Jobjen.
No.
Ambrose.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Doorman.
No.
McGinnis.
No.
Lee.
No.
Gripp.
No.
Condon.
No.
And Peacock.
No.
Ten nos, Your Honor.
Very good, this resolution fails. Now we'll move to, is there a motion approval for all items on the consent agenda? Motion and a second. Brian, please, the roll call.
Jobjen.
Yes.
Ambrose. Dunn.
Yes.
Doorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yes.
And Dickman.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, all items on consent are approved. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? Seeing none, is there any public with business? If you do, please come to the podium, state your name, ward or address, and you'll have five minutes. No one? Okay, Mr. Handle. I, I don't know that I've ever seen you be here and not comment, so.
Okay, well, it's been, it's been since the middle of March when all this started happening, and I had my last in, interior lunch in Muscatine. Anyway, the two things I want to talk about tonight, and pleasure to see you all again. One is the possible re-establishment of Washington Square Park. And then number two is one item about the railroad track, bike path reconstruction that I'd like to bring to your attention, maybe some thoughts on that. As I said before, when I, actually, when I came into town Sunday night, I was joined by my sister to see the comet, didn't see it, but, you know, it only comes by every 6,000 years, so I figured it was worth a try. And consequently, or similarly, I guess, as a city, when things happen, only occasionally, we need to take advantage of those things. And in this case, something that happens every 60 years, where, where you get the obsolescence of, of a building, and the opportunity to perhaps write what happened in the early 60s. And that's when, in the early 60s, when Washington Square Park was down on its, on, you know, kind of, in a bad way, a lot of undesirables were frequenting, it was in pretty bad shape. The city decided, let's give that land to the Y. They'll do a good job with it, and be a good place for our, our young kids to spend time. And so they've done that, but I think if we don't take a serious effort in, in re-establishing Washington Square Park, we'll be missing an opportunity that we'll have to wait another 60 years when a new building becomes obsolete. If any of you have traveled to Savannah, Georgia, you'll notice, one of the things about Savannah is that they have intermittent squares every certain number of blocks, and basically what it is, is you have nine blocks, and in the center of that, you've got a park. Each of those nine blocks has amenity by that, from that park, and, and that's very similar to what we have right now, and we would have in Washington Square. It's like nine blocks in downtown Davenport. If the property values could be increased and it becomes a desirable area, why wouldn't you want to have something happen to have that, make that happen? I mean, Washington Square was historic in that it was the middle of our German community for many years. A lot of the buildings that are surrounding that block, they were put up just because of that park, the quality of them, because of that. So I was, I was over at the Y today, and was told that actually someone had looked at that property yesterday, and I don't know if anybody in the Parks Department or anybody in planning is, is working on this. And I, I think again, a good city would maybe not do this, but a great city like Davenport must do this. So I, I urge the council and Planning Department and Parks Department to make a solid effort in that, and perhaps with the encouragement of the Downtown Davenport Partnership. And where do we get the money for that? Well, you know, if we don't have the money, I would suggest this, a land swap. There were two squares, Lafayette Square and Washington Square. The Lafayette Square, which is adjoining the, the former Sears Building, between it and the courthouse complex in north of Forest Street, very underused, but it would be a very good place for an apartment building, I think, apartment development. And the city would get then the, the building that's now in, in Washington Square, and I, I've got some ideas for tearing down most of the, the building of the former Y, but perhaps making a very interesting reuse of certain portions of that, that old building. So I, I really would like to urge council to do that. The last one is, and I'll be quickly, quick on this, because I may be running out of time. So on the paper about the rebuilding of the railroad tracks and the, it's going to be real quick.
Please finish up, Mr. Johnson.
The bicycle paths, if they were going to be raised at the same level as the railroad tracks, could become a flood wall. I talked to Brian Schad about that today, using a, you know, impervious fill, and he said that there were really essentially too many moving parts for that, that could happen.
Mr. Handle.
So I would, so basically what I'm saying is, rather than having the bike paths at that height, because there's a good chance we may have to remove all that fill, have the bike paths follow the existing slope, go up and down, so the, the feds don't have a whole lot of money, and we may find that we're going to have to pay for removing that fill.
Thank you, sir.
In another few years.
Thank you, Mr. Handle. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing, yes, ma'am, please. Good to see you again.
Before I start, I want to say I'm really proud of Davenport for seeing so many face masks on tonight. I work with epidemiologists and infectious disease specialists, and this is one of the best ways we can stop the spread of this disease. One thing I want to remind you of, though, is please do not touch the front of your mask. If you do, use hand sanitizer, that's basically a contaminated surface, and just think about everything else you touch after that. So now that I'm done with that lecture. My name is Elizabeth Van Camp, and I live in First Ward. I work with some of the world's best epidemiologists and infectious disease specialists at the University of Iowa. We are struggling to handle a pandemic in Scott County, even though we don't have to be. One preventative measure that every expert I work with agrees on is face covering. Research shows that not only do face masks prevent the spread of COVID-19, but if just 80% of us wore them, this pandemic would end. And research also shows that daily COVID case numbers go down just five days after mask mandates are put in place. It's such a simple step we could take to get our lives back and protect the people who are most vulnerable in our community. I understand that our governor has told Iowa cities to not mandate universal masking, but I'm urging you to put the needs of Davenport citizens ahead of politics. In the spirit of causing good trouble, I want us to join Muscatine and Iowa City in putting the public health here above everything else. There are human lives at risk here, there are jobs, there are schools, there are kids that are suffering, and we have a solution. So why would we not use it? We all want some sense of normalcy back, and we're all tired of taking these precautions, I get that. But COVID-19 is not going to go away just because we're tired of it, or just because we want to go back to school, or just because we want to be out in the community again. We need to use the tools that we have to stop the spread, but widespread adoption of masking is not going to happen without leadership. Voters told you all in November that they believed you were the best leaders we have, so don't let them down. Protect our community by mandating universal masking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, please.
Hi, I'm Athena Gilbreath from the First Ward. Wanted to talk about a couple of things tonight. Had to redo some of my wording because I shouldn't be calling anyone out, so I want to make sure I say this correctly. I did want to take the opportunity to address the entire council and the public about some problematic behavior that was displayed here during the meeting in the hole last week. Alderman Peacock did voice his concerns about the Alderman Peacock did voice his concerns about the African-American community's perception of the Brieja Terrell case. He offered his assistance to Chief Sikorski in painting a better picture as we continue to exist in this watershed moment. I'm here tonight to remind you that this is not the first time, though, that the Black community has had to demand change from you, and I don't think that Alderman Peacock should have to do it by himself. I was pleased that the chief was quite open to listening in regards to the perception that Brieja may not be as high as a priority as a missing white girl. He stated that if that perception existed, he'd like to know about it, and I find this to be one of the better responses to this concern that I've heard in the days since Brieja's disappearance. But I do want to backtrack for just a little bit. First of all, it is frustrating, and it is tiring for us having to point out every single time there are perceptions, discrimination, and racism in this community, Mr. Mayor, as if it's a Black responsibility. So I would be remiss not to stand dutifully and say to all of you, who are you to question a Black man's experience when it comes to hearing from Black constituents in Davenport? You mentioned that you were surprised by Alderman Peacock's observations, and before I go further, I want to make perfectly clear, I'm not here on behalf of Mr. Peacock, I'm here on behalf of myself, of the Black community, because once again, our city is mistaking what is and what is not racism. The Alderman is perfectly capable of speaking for himself. It was stated that what Alderman Peacock observed in the community is not what you've seen in over 33 years of the city council, and that we have great police, we have a great police department, they do a phenomenal job. I want to say, however, your silence is violence. You may not realize that not hearing your Black Alderman is a perpetuation of this. And so I have to ask why this council is so hell-bent on continuing to operate at a level that likes to philander to racism. Mr. Mayor, where is the cultural competency of this council, and where's your leadership? We sat at Panera a couple days after your election, and we talked about this, and I have yet to see some of that leadership. We're at a moment that future generations will talk about, study, and dissect, and once again, Davenport's not stepping up. I don't know if you know what the definition of gaslighting is, but it is a weapon commonly used among white supremacists to make Black people feel crazy. Like, the very thought of racism is like aliens landing and speaking French. The proper definition is a manipulation tactic used to create doubt in the minds of others. For example, why are you being so sensitive? Maybe people would listen if your tone were nicer. Show me the data that proves your theory, and stop playing the race card. Folks, I've been here several times to ask better of you, and here I am again. The statement that Alderman Peacock has experienced and observed is gaslighting. I'm giving you fair warning that I'm going to petition the city for cultural competency training for the entire city government. We can't afford any more incompetence when it comes to racism. We stand here Wednesday after Wednesday, and we talk about what we're going to spend money on, what we're going to do to the streets, what we're going to do for the city, but we never talk about cultural competency, and I, for one, am tired of it. You may believe in your politics, where you believe in blue lives, and I just have to tell you, Black lives matter. And if you have a problem with that, then I suggest strongly that, I would encourage you, actually, to resign, because if you can't serve your entire city, especially those here in the Black community, then you have absolutely no business sitting in those chairs. As a Black woman, a mother, a member of the city and state Black caucuses, and a racial justice activist, I do echo Alderman Peacock's sentiments, because I've experienced those as well. If you say you've been searching out for Brieja, then that's what you say, but I can tell you that I haven't seen a single one of you, except for Mr. Peacock, out on these searches. I spent my entire weekend in Clinton. My friend AJ and I organized a big search on Credit Island a week ago, and I've not seen you, or you, Mr. Mayor, out with us at all. Now, this is not my perception, this is my complete observation. It doesn't mean you haven't searched, it means I've not seen any of you. And if I haven't seen you, other Black people in this community have not seen you. So yes, it's very easy to jump to the thought, I'm almost done, that maybe this little girl might not be cared about by this community because of the color of her skin. And if you can't respect that perception, then you're not serving at full capacity. I recognize that we're all frustrated, and we're all tired, but adding fuel to the fire by personifying racism is beneath you...
Thank you, Athena.
...and beneath these hallowed halls. I just want to say, again, you are Brieja's city council, you are Brieja's mayor, and this is a moment for justice, and that justice is decided by all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, ma'am, and then ma'am.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is AJ Sharp. I am from the First Ward. I am not a public speaker by any means, but I wanted to come up here and kind of voice some frustrations I'm having, and to kind of piggyback off of what Athena just said. I have been out at these searches looking for Brieja, and I hear you guys when you say, "We will find her." We, the community, have been looking for her. I have not seen anybody from, in front of me, besides Peacock, out there helping us look. I obviously don't know what happens at your homes and behind closed doors, but as a citizen of Davenport, like Brieja, I am not seeing you guys show up. Now is the time to show that you support our Black community, and you support Black lives, and that you think Brieja's life matters, because it does. So I am begging you to stop the lip service and to show your community that you care. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Kim Brown. Grew up here, raised my kids here. First of all, I want to thank Athena for bringing what she brought up to you, bringing that to your attention. I also want to say that I haven't seen any of you all out searching for Brieja. I've seen Mr. Peacock, I've seen Athena, I've seen Representative Akayle Samad, and I spent a lot of time in Clinton and Credit Island. So I'm piggybacking right on what she says, and I think you can do better. Second, I really, truly believe that as the mayor, you should consider making masks mandatory in this community. The numbers are rising exponentially in Iowa, and as a result, they're also going up in Rock Island County, because we are one big community. I have an office over here. I come over here, and I feel I'm at risk, because nobody's wearing masks. In and out of businesses, nobody's wearing masks. It's the best thing to do. I'm not an infectious disease nurse, I'm just a regular old nurse, but I know infection control. Wash your hands and wear a mask, maintain your distance, and you will stop this pandemic. We got kids, we got old people, I'm an old people raising teenagers. You want to send kids back to school and then send them home to Grandma and Grandpa? That's unforgivable and unexcusable. I have a family member that's a teacher and his wife. They're going back to school to take care of the working class, and that's exactly what they said, the working class takes care of the working class. What does that tell you? They don't think anybody else cares. So please consider a mandatory mask-wearing order for Scott County, at least Davenport, and protect everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one. Is there a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.